Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Cumberland School Committee meeting this evening, Thursday, August 28th, 2025, at the Cumberland High School Transitional Building at 7:01 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Feather.
Second.
Second by Ms. Shea. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes six to zero. Just note for the minutes that Ms. Smith is absent this evening. Consent agenda. Approval of minutes for the regular meeting, 8:14, 2025. An executive session meeting, 8:14, 2025. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Feather.
Second.
Second by Ms. Goldstein. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes six to zero. Report out of executive session meeting. Report out of executive session meeting on 8:28, 25, 2025. Report out of executive session votes. There were no votes taken. Vote to seal minutes of executive session. Can I have a motion to seal the minutes? Motion by Ms. Shea.
Second.
Second by Ms. Feather. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes four to two with Mr. Dean and Mr. Bacon in the negative. Personnel announcements. Ms. Resett?
Hi, good evening. Tonight we have three resignations effective 8/19, 2025. Eliza Costa, Library Media STEM, .5 teacher at BF Norton. Effective 8/15, 2025, Jody Lamagna, Science, Grade Eight at McCourt. And effective 8/18, 25, Amy LaPrada, ELA North Cumberland Middle School, one year only. We have six appointments this evening. The first three are effective 8/27, 2025. Jordan Cruz, I.Am Plus Special Education at Community, one year only. Lisa Gregory, Math, Cumberland High School, one year only. And Natalie Rato, Science at McCourt, one year only. The next three are effective 8/29, 2025. Anna Malloyan, Paraprofessional Strive at Cumberland High School. Pooja Sharma, Paraprofessional I.Am Plus at Community. And Maria Fay D'Escano, Paraprofessional ICAN at McCourt. And coaches as submitted.
Thank you very much. Superintendent's report. Dr. Thornton?
Good evening. Well, it's that time of year. We'd like to welcome everyone back to another school year. And this truly has been unprecedented in the amount of work that's been done this summer. I'd like to thank all the Central Office team. They've been fantastic, especially Will DeJesus. Where is Will? Yeah. To say that Will does a lot is an understatement. He's been inspirational in his work. So thank you, Will, for staying with us and not leaving us. Thank you. Also, I'd like to thank the custodial staff. The schools are sparkling. The teachers for their patience in going through all the construction, all the moving, all the unboxing. It's been great. And also, just an exciting time here in Cumberland with all these projects. Mike? As you know, in the news, once again, we have some tragic news around school safety. It's wanted you to know, we are mindful of this in Cumberland. We do train on something called ALIS, which stands for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. We actually train our, all our staff, our current staff, get a refresher. Our new staff are trained in the full training program, actually happening tomorrow. So that's tomorrow at McCourt, I believe. So that's something we are keenly aware of. Next up, some helpful hints for parents. We have the bus routes. The bus routes are now out. They have been approved by the Cumberland PD. Any concerns folks have, they can certainly bring them up with transportation, and we can look at those. One point from last year, we talked about last month, we are not transporting this year Mercy Mount, Mountain St. Charles, and Bradley students. That gives us more flexibility for our routing. We have 100 more students in the bus system this year than last year. And we actually use the same fleet. Also, keep in mind, we added a program at Community School. So we added all these different pieces. Any questions on busing, it's transportation@cumberlandschools.org, or Tracy Walton, and we'll happily get back to you. Lunch menus are out. And My School Bucks, you can preload your lunch money on that link. Schedules for the high and middle went out, I believe, today. And teacher assignments also were sent home for pre-K and elementary. Any questions on your Aspen account, you can email aspenhelp@cumberlandschools.org. Enrollment. Let's talk about that again. So we still remain up. The question is, you know, do they all come on the first day of school? 125 is a big number. I called some of our friends across the river in Lincoln. They're kind of flat. We're seeing a big number here. The number, I had people check today, the biggest number I saw was 1997, 98. We had 173 more kids. So 125 is up there. So, you know, we'll see if that materializes. If it does, as I mentioned last time, it's a good situation for state aid, which would help us not rely on fund balance so much. That's great news. It is putting a strain on our capacity. We build an addition, we fill the building up. We do it again, we fill it up. Right now, we are pretty full in elementaries. We have some spaces. We're kind of moving around, but it is a good problem to have. So you can see overall, you know, our numbers here across the board, a total of 125. So with that, I'd like to turn the balance of the time over to our wonderful Colliers Project Management Team. We have Megan and Anne Marie to talk around all our projects. Normally, I do the construction. I want them to do it because they do a better job than me. So we're going to talk about the many, many projects we have in Cumberland this year and show you where we were and where we are now. So take it away.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. My name is Megan Havrilla, and this is...
Anne Marie Andre.
So we're going to give you an update on the construction projects that have taken place. And just as a recap, so we actually entered into a five-year capital project plan with the Ride School Department, oh my gosh, long day, with Ride. And that dates back to 2019. So here we are, 2025, and we have met your five-year capital plan. So on the slide that you have right here... So what you see here, this is all of the projects that Cumberland has completed in the past five years. Now, Anne Marie is going to talk to you a little bit more about this past summer and the work that you've seen getting done upstairs, and then also at the middle schools. That was an extremely heavy lift. So we did not let up the brakes or any of the steam in this summer. It was an extremely busy summer, and can't thank enough to Will, to Tim, to Mike, to Dr. Thornton. Everyone was a big help this past year. So when you look at this capital improvement plan, I would just like to recognize all of the accomplishments that Cumberland has taken on because this was a huge, huge project effort in front of you. So we wrapped up the high school swing space. We're in the pre-K CTE high school project now. Ashton Elementary School, so that had completed two years ago now. And then Community Elementary School was the last project to be renovated. And then we've got Garvin Memorial. That was also a renovation. The very first elementary school project that was renovated was Cumberland Hill. So that was done back in 2022. And then we've got the two middle schools. So speaking directly to Community, so this is where we did a Phase One. We did the brand-new addition. That opened up for a year. And then we moved all of our friends from Community into the swing space here. So this whole past year, we've been renovating the interior of the space. And I think we all can agree that this was the largest renovation that we had to do with the most amount of work and the biggest changes. So with Community, one of the really big things was all brand-new windows. We did all-new gutters. We did an entire new roof. So I think this was the most transformative. This is where you walk into the lobby area, the same lobby area. We just brightened it up. You can see that we retained all of the wall tiles there, which was, you know, a big effort by the past students and faculty. This is the front administration area, which had a really big facelift to it. So that's been a really great addition there just alone. This is the gymnasium. And what we really did here was we did a whole new flooring. We've got wall pads. So just really brightened and added more life to a little bit of the dated areas of the building. All of the restrooms got renovated. And then here's some snapshots of just some of the classrooms, all-new furniture. Where we could, we all, we did new ceiling, new lighting, new painting. This happened to be within the kindergarten classroom. So we retained some of the flooring that was there, but we made sure to fit it out with new furniture. This is some of the classroom spaces again, all-new lighting, all-new ceilings, new windows. So just really freshened up the look. And then we also had the playground projects that we did. So those are actually tied to the second bond that Cumberland has. So that was done at Ashton, Cumberland Hill, and then Garvin Memorial. So at Cumberland Hill, that was the first project that had their playground project done. So that was completed just at the end of this past school year. Then we moved over to Garvin. And then Dr. Thornton included that bottom photo there, the new pathway that was installed. So that was really exciting for Garvin. And then our last playground project is Ashton. So this one is our largest project, and this one has been taking the most amount of time. So that's going to wrap up within the next two weeks. And we are working with Nidia, the school principal, to be able to coordinate with her in terms of these last efforts for construction. But that will turn over in the next two weeks. Okay, I did enough talking. Here you go.
Okay, hello, everyone. So McCourt Middle School. So we did a few, we did some interior renovations to six science classrooms. So we started these projects, the remainder of the projects that I'll go through, we had about eight weeks to complete these projects. So very short timeline. Once the end of school started, we were in there demoing and doing work. So just want to thank all the teachers, the principals, for your patience while we went through this huge transformation. So McCourt Middle School, we renovated six classrooms and just reimagined the space to be really flexible and function for today's operation, today's way that they're teaching and learning. So very basic science instruction, access to power and water only, so no harsh chemicals. We put in some snapshots of progress of the construction. So a lot of trenching and getting that plumbing to those locations that we needed. This is the final result. So you can still see there's, you know, a couple things still happening in cleaning up. New prep rooms with millwork. We did all-new flooring tile, luxury vinyl tile, so Will loves that. Less floors to wax and maintain, so it has a great life to maintain, those floors. And also good cushion on your feet for the students and staff. We have new furniture, fixtures and equipment in these rooms, so very flexible on casters. We have some cord rails for your power, so all power's going to come down and, you know, assist with those science instruction. North Cumberland Middle School, so same scope of work, interior renovations to the sixth classroom. So that's your sixth, sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade classrooms. So some progress photos of where it was before and what it used to look like and how they used to teach science instruction then and today, you know, where it's going. So a lot of trench, a lot of dirt, a lot of things to get it to this, this level. So here's North Cumberland Middle School. Principals are very happy, teachers to get into those spaces. Preschool Center and Upper Level High School, so that's in the Transitional Building on the upper level. So a lot of work as well, so same timeline. We did some landscaping outside. I don't know if you've noticed when you came into the building, so that's a nice refresher. We're still going through and finalizing those details. But we did a lot of renovations as well, so seven classrooms to support, you know, your diverse range of student needs here at the preschool. We have the media center, faculty lounge, other support spaces for our faculty within the preschool center. And then for the upper level, we renovated all of the classrooms that are in the donut as well as the center media space, which will be your CTE program. Here are some progress photos. So this is the pre-K center. We did new toilet rooms, new reflection rooms. This is what it, you know, certain phase here, that was your hallway maybe a few weeks ago with all the trenching and just tape, quite a mess. But this is what it looks like today. So we have our furniture in there. Teachers are setting up, new millwork, new cubbies for the students, new tall wardrobes with locks and doors to accommodate all the storage needs for the faculty. New lighting as well. This is the upper level high school area, so some progress photos. It wasn't pretty. Not sure if you recall what it used to look like, but it was very enclosed off. There was probably three or four dark rooms. There was this large, large area here, a lot of MEP work that needed to be rerouted in order to open it up. This was your old skylight. We actually took this cover off, and the superintendent had a great idea. Do we have to have that back on there? Could we just open it completely? So that's what we did. And this is what it looks like today. So if you make your way up to the upper level, go take a peek, it's beautiful, especially on a sunny day. This will be the CTE classroom, and then there's a typical classroom here. So another project we accomplished during this summer, this actually happened during the spring break. We have a roof replacement Phase One. So that took place at the main building of the high school that's located in this area. That was the most crucial, crucial component identified within the reports of the roof repair needed. So we tackled that within, you know, that spring break. Our guys were here doing some work. We have some progress photos there, and then this is the final result. So a significant portion of that flat roof was repaired. And that was pretty much most of the summer projects, the summer slams, as we like to call them. And then looking ahead and to the second bond projects, we have the new BF Norton Elementary School. So this project, 64,500 square feet, K through five, four-track school, in enrollment of 576 students. We are very excited. We are about two weeks away for our groundbreaking ceremony. So that is coming up pretty quickly. Some construction has commenced there with cleaning and grubbing, but just wanted to give a brief overview of the project and the design. We are, we're very excited for this one. So here's a rendering of the exterior of what it will look like. That is looking at, you know, a view if you were standing on Broad Street, what your view would be. So we're bringing the grade up. We're bringing that typography all the way up to meet the elevation of Broad Street. We're doing, relocating the Veterans Memorial to the front there. So it's a nice green community space, green buffer, you know, to that active city area. Here's an axonometric view from the rear. So this was the big ball field. So we don't have a huge ball field, but we have a great green space here for the community and the students with the playground area. So this is Broad Street here, and then you'll come in. There'll be full circulation all the way around the site, and that will help alleviate a lot of the traffic in getting cars off of Broad Street and onto the campus. This building is designed into two separate zones. So the first zone, which is this volume there, will be your academic wing. And then the rear portion will be more of your community spaces. So your gymnasium, your cafeteria, all of those support spaces. We do have a separate entrance on this side, too. So if you have events later, we can close the academic wing off, that's more private, and then open up the rear side. We have some renderings to show you. So when you come into the building, this is the media, the media center. So this space is really special to BF Norton and the way that the teachers are embracing science, technology, art, and STEM. And we really wanted to showcase that in the front of the building. It sparked curiosity with the students and showcased this. So we're very excited to infuse some of that technology and science and nature into the space. So you'll see some elements of nature with the abstract tree. The next image is showing the classroom, the art classroom. We have a typical classroom here, so all-new furniture, making sure you have the appropriate storage as well. We have learning common spaces on every level, so those are at the ends and corners of your corridor. So open space for collaboration and community spaces. Student dining, so this was in that second area towards the back that opens up adjacent to your field and playground space as well as the gymnasium. And in the student dining, we looked at a few different posture types to solve for different types of student needs. So not everyone thrives in this all, you know, open setting. So we have some areas in alternate dining in the back that's a little tucked away, more booth-like seating. And lastly, we have our construction, just safety construction slides here. We do want to remind everyone, it is an active construction site today. So we have been cleaning and grubbing and doing a lot of earthwork today. There's no parking on-site anymore since, you know, we do have this tricky area where we're doing construction. I don't know if you see here, this is our building, existing building and the new, so it's pretty tight. And we are encouraging staff, parents, everyone, to please follow the protocols that we're sharing with you. There's, you know, we need to make sure circulation is running smoothly and that, you know, we're all working together. This is going through our construction phasing diagram. So again, existing building, this is our fence line here, and this is where we're doing that construction. This yellow arrow and line is showing the circulation path for pickup and drop-off, drop-off and pickup. So there's really no queuing, stopping, or parking. It's coming in, dropping off, smooth process, and keeping the traffic flow. Our construction team does have blackout times where we cannot perform any work in this area, and that's during student drop-off and pickup. So those are our blackout hours, and we'll be working together with the team for that. I threw in a couple photos here of what the site looks like today. So playground equipment is all down. We've protected the Veterans Memorial, and that is being relocated. And there's a lot of earthwork going there. We do have our construction team, Consigley Construction, our partners, to answer any questions that you may have or to give a brief overview for you for our construction.
Great. Any questions from the committee? Just a quick question, just to reiterate, to make sure I have this correct. BF Norton is a three-track school currently? And this will bring all the grades to a four-track? Which will help with, I think Dr. Thornton was saying earlier, we have more students coming in, and this will increase capacity for those students. Okay, great. Another question I have is the old BF Norton, the current one. Will that at the end be taken down for parking? Or is that the goal for, because...
Correct. So if I go back to a slide here, the first here, I guess you can see it. So the old BF Norton is located here, is located here near Broad Street. So that will be the last phase of construction. Our timeline will open for fall of 2027. So June of 2027, they will start to take that building down, secure it into a fence line as they finish doing additional parking for staff, teachers, and the Veterans Memorial and community spaces.
Great, thank you. Any other questions at the construction team? Did you have any other insight you wanted to add?
So we need to make sure that we adhere to the signage that we put up, and that safety goes along. That includes, you know, people are curious, they want to go and look. That site fence is the boundary. It can't be going on there. That's not to say that we won't give force to you all if you're sneaky, but it's all going to be coordinated. You can't just show up and, "Here I am." That's going to be coordinated, so that way everyone is safe. You guys, the students, who are most important to me, and the craft workers, you know. So we just want to make sure that that's adhered to and everyone fully understands.
Great, we appreciate that. You're welcome. Any other questions regarding safety, construction, plans? Well, thank you very much for the presentation, and we appreciate it, and excited to see the end result. Next is reports of standing committees, Fiscal and Management Subcommittee update. Mr. Dean and I didn't meet this evening. There are resolutions to approve later on, and it was a pretty short and quick meeting. Policy and Procedure Subcommittee update. Ms. Feather?
Yep, Policy and Procedure did meet this week, and we have a few policies, amended policies, to be reviewing in just a little bit.
Thank you very much. Achievement and Communication Subcommittee update. Our next meeting is Thursday, September 18th, 2025, at 4:30 PM. District Health and Wellness Subcommittee update. Ms. Shea?
We're scheduled to meet October 9th.
Great, thanks. Public hearing, reading of amended policies. Ms. Feather?
Ah, there we go. I was just making sure I had that. The achievement piece updated in my calendar, so that came pretty quickly. Alrighty, so we had three policies that we, that we'd like to read into the record tonight. G21 Non-Contracted At-Will Employee Policy, J21 FERPA Policy, and the K5 Appeals Process for Cumberland. So I'm just going to ask for those three to be read into the record, and later on, we're going to discuss them a little bit more.
Thank you, Ms. Feather. Do we have public comment on those three policies, G21, J21, and K5? Okay? Do we have comments from the public in general regarding anything? Okay. New business. Discussion in our vote to approve overnight field trips. Mr. Crowley? Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for taking the time to listen to our request, once again, for our annual cross-country trips out of state. This gives us an opportunity to compete against unfamiliar opponents, use different courses and training for our championship season, which comes up late October, early November. The courses that we run, one in Manchester, New Hampshire, and one up in Bowdoin, New York, are very challenging, and they're both great fields for our boys and girls rostering cross-country programs to compete. The first one is, I put eight initially, I apologize for that, is 9/19 and 9/20 in Manchester, New Hampshire for the Manchester Invitational. And the second one is 9/26 and 9/22 for the Bowdoin Park Cross Country Classic in New York. And the team will stay in Fishkill, New York for that one, and then we'll stay in Manchester for the first one. This is an annual event that both, both two races, we always go to Manchester, New Hampshire, and New York, Bowdoin has also run the Eastern Regionals as well. Coach's chaperone, Mr. Carpenter, Mr. Roy, and Coach Carpenter, so we have three chaperones for 14 students. Students are transported by their own parents. Students also stay in the hotel room with their own parents, so it's a parent and a child in each room. Students do not room with students. All students who are eligible to attend do attend. It is paid through the Booster Club and the fundraising efforts of our cross-country boosters. Students will be eligible, excuse me, will be responsible for all missed academic work. The New Hampshire trip is a half-day, and to get out to New York, we dismiss them for that full day just to give them time to get up there, do course walks, and do race prep the day prior. But it's a great opportunity for our cross-country programs. Every year, having Coach Cross Country and having the opportunity to take our teams, it's a great experience for our kids, for team bonding, and just the opportunity, again, for great out-of-state competition. There are the Rhode Island teams who go to New Hampshire, as far as New York. Sometimes Hendrickson would go up. I'm not sure. I didn't look at the full roster of that one as well. And hopefully, I get to come back to you late or early November or late because the top six teams will qualify from New England, and this year they're being held at Thetford Academy in Vermont, which is another great course to run. So that's it for our fall trips.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions? Any questions? Okay. Discussion and our vote to approve overnight field trips. CHS Cross Country Manchester Invitational, New Hampshire, September 19th and 20th. Pleasure of the committee. Motion to approve by Mr. Bacon, second by Ms. Shea. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes six to zero. CHS Cross Country, Bowdoin Park Cross Country Classic, New York, September 26th and 27th. Pleasure of the committee. Motion by Mr. Bacon, second by Ms. Shea. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes six to zero. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion and our vote to approve homeschool instructional requests for 2025-26 school year. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Feather. Second by Mr. Bacon. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes six to zero. Discussion and our vote to approve revised school calendar, changing the start date of preschool from Wednesday, September 3rd to Thursday, September 4th. This was in our drive. We just need to push the start date of preschool one day due to the first Wednesday of the school year is not a shortened day, but a full day, so it leads to some transportation issues. Do I have a motion to approve revised school calendar?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Shea, second by Ms. Goldstein. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes six to zero. Vote on superintendent's 2025-26 salary benefits per contract. Pleasure of the committee. Motion by Mr. Bacon to approve a salary and benefit. I have a motion by Mr. Bacon to mirror the G-6 benefits for the superintendent in the Step 10 salary raise for the teachers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Goldstein. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes five to one with Mr. Dean in the negative. Discussion and our vote?
Thank you.
Discussion and our vote to approve the Transportation Efficiency Study Proposal and Resolution, CS-PR-082025-110, Transportation Efficiency Study, Transpar Group, Inc. At this time, I feel we need to get more work on the details. I'm going to ask to table it, however, if there's any discussion from what you saw in the drive, this would be the time to talk and discuss that. So, yes, Ms. Feather?
I'm just, thank you. And so I'm just catching up. What details are we looking for at this point, and what's our timeline moving forward?
As you know, if you mean it's back, you did react and vote on just the baseline package from Transpar to look at efficiencies both in district and amongst districts. We also want Transpar to give us a price on having you consider having them look at start times and boundaries for, starting in FY '27. So as far as your timeline, I mean, it's going to take several months to do this work, but you have some time. But they did give a price to you in your drive, I think it was $79,000 for that, for that work, if you did that. So this would be just an expert group giving you, you know, their best thinking on Cumberland's boundaries and start times and that whole conversation.
One more follow-up really quickly, and I apologize, I haven't seen this yet. So just the, with regard to start times, are we going to be asking them to consider, you know, the ideas around, you know, better start times for high school students as well to better kind of match the research around what's appropriate for high school students versus elementary?
We could ask them that question. You could also ask them to have all the elementaries in one tier, but, and they'll give you all the cost, cost for all those different, or pushing back schools 15 minutes. What's that look like?
Beautiful, thank you.
Mr. Dean?
Yeah, so the, sorry. The change here is Phase Two, right? Because we approved Phase One. So are we going to table Phase One as well, or are we going to, so we're going to go with Phase One?
I think you voted on Phase One separately at that meeting. This was never, Phase Two was never voted on.
Okay.
Yes, exactly. Phase One, we voted, I think that was on that 14,000 mark. This one at the 79, I think 125. It came in our drive and it was great information, and Transpar is going to come out and ask questions, I mean, is going to come out and discuss, and at that time, we can ask questions. But I did, I was, I did, I wanted to know what's the normal LP process, but my understanding is because it's a ride, spot, not sponsored, but what is the word I'm looking for, that it's okay that there was?
Yeah, Ride went out and secured this vendor as the state vendor for this, this process.
Perfect. So at the next meeting, we'll put this back on for the next meeting, and that will then look at the whole gamut of redistricting, start times, et cetera. And as Dr. Thornton said, having an expert do this work is extremely helpful. Dr. Thornton, just because we are on Transpar, is there any update on the busing part and where they are with recommendations or how long that normally takes?
Nothing right now as far as their, their short-term work.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Yes, Mr. Bacon?
Is there a chance to get someone from Transpar here or maybe, like, call in?
Yeah, we actually had them scheduled tonight, but now we'll get them back. We'll probably have them Zooming next meeting, but we'll have someone here to answer questions.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to have some sort of dialogue.
Also, we did talk to them, it'd be helpful if you have questions in advance, if you can give them to them, then they can really respond deeply to them. But yes, they'll be here, either virtually or in person.
If we have questions for them, is that, sorry, I have it here somewhere. The one, the gentleman that sent us the initial email, Mike, I think, Brassfield, is that who we should be emailing?
Probably. Write to Melanie, and she can kind of put them all together for us and get them over to Transpar.
Any other questions on that? So questions to Melanie, is that what I heard, Dr. Thornton?
I'm sorry?
Questions to Melanie? And Transpar will be here either virtually or in person next meeting?
That's right.
Perfect, thank you very much. Next is discussion and our vote to establish student safety and behavioral health committee in accordance with Rhode Island General Law 16-53-1-2A3, establish a school improvement team. So my understanding is, a statute was just passed this last legislative year, and it's an amendment, but Mr. Adams, please correct me, under already established statute regarding sit teams or school improvement teams. And they added an amendment that we have to have these behavioral health.
District-wide student safety and behavioral health committee. SSBHC.
Now, my, I guess my question is regarding establishing this committee. Can this mimic the process that is already established for the sit teams, since it's unhoused in that statute as an amendment?
I'm just reading it.
Okay.
I mean, I've read it.
Yeah, yeah.
But I, I think my answer would be no, and I think if you just read it, it says "The school committee shall establish a district-wide student safety and behavioral health committee." That's not a sit team. That's a different entity. "Each committee shall have representation from administration," that would be Dr. Thornton and his team, "to be appointed by the superintendent, at least two certified staff to be appointed by the local collective bargaining agent, and at least two support staff to be appointed by the local collective bargaining agreement, and may also include a school resource officer to be appointed by the superintendent. The school board or school committee shall strive to have staff representation from the elementary, middle, and high school level on the SSBHC." And then it goes on to list the SSBHC's responsibilities.
So by that reading, would that be the superintendent's responsibility to establish that?
"The school committee of the town shall establish a district-wide..."
But the appointees is by?
Yeah, so...
Okay.
But that doesn't mean that those are the only people on this committee. It can include other people, and you could have 20 people in this committee. If you're guessing, if you're hearing in my voice a little, "What the heck is this?", it's because I am feeling a little, "What the heck is this?". We have a health and wellness committee, and this, there is overlap, but the problem is the appointment of the people to serve on this committee are different people. So there needs to be a different committee.
And because it's in law, we have to develop two committees, where fiscal, achievement, and the others are not in statute.
Right.
Okay. Mr., I'm sorry, Ms. Goldstein, you had a question as well, right? Mr. Bacon, Ms. Goldstein?
My question was really just so, my understanding, because I read it three times, and three times I got three different meanings out of it. This is, this is potential, this is a subcommittee of the school committee, is what, how I'm reading this?
That's the only way I think you can reasonably read it. I agree with you.
Is chaired by a member of the school committee?
It doesn't say. It's, it's not a, I'm struggling to compliment the draftsmanship.
Understood. Mr. Bacon?
So to your point, you said we already pretty much have that with a health and wellness subcommittee, correct? So why don't we just change the name? And then Dr. Thornton can add his two people.
So that would be possible, I suppose, and CTA would add two people and so forth. That's something that we could talk about. The, the challenge, I, I, I'm just having a challenge with the volume of people who are going to be on this committee. And if we already have health and wellness, which has, needs to have a parent, and typically has other people who participate in that, and that's a whole other conversation that we're in the midst of. I would love that, Mr. Bacon. Let me just say it that way. So if there was a way to do it, that would be great, but we'd have to make sure we were complying with the statute, which obligates the six different people that I mentioned.
And health statute as well, so we'd have to be complying with two different statutes with?
With one committee. And it does have slightly different, you read the statute, it's not just health and wellness, which health and wellness committee, I think it was initially more like eating well to a certain extent, and this is more behavioral health and so forth. But if you could do it with one committee, that might save a lot of time and a lot of
It's just odd to me that they stuck it. Sit statute is an amendment.
Yeah, it's strange, and it would, it is strange. I'm, yeah, it's strange.
So I guess we can vote to establish, because we have to establish one per statute, but obviously, we need more guidance on how to do that, or what, what to do compared to the health and wellness statute and the one Ms. Shea over is the chair of, and whether that follows this one, and I don't, I don't know.
If you vote to establish one, and then there'll be more detail as you build out that committee.
Okay.
Because you have to establish one, it's statutorily, it's a statutory obligation.
So I have a motion to establish a student safety and behavioral health committee in accordance with Rhode Island General Law. Motion by Ms. Shea, second by Ms. Goldstein. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes six to zero. Discussion and our vote to approve amended policies. Ms. Feather?
Oh, yeah, that's me. Okay, so we have three policies in front of us today that were amended in a variety of different ways. The first one is the G-21 non-contracted-at-will employee policy, and to that one, we just voted on that during the policy meeting to increase the minimum wage there to align with what the actual minimum wage is. And then also, there was one other piece of that. Was that, was that it, Bonnie? Okay, the minimum wage, okay. I had written some sort of thing here, and I could not read my own handwriting. Okay, so that was G-21. J-21, which is the FERPA policy, that's the, that was the biggest changes that we, that we were looking at. So we had to undertake the FERPA changes for a couple of reasons, one of which is that we're trying to establish some, some, some subcommittees or potential subcommittees around busing and transportation and all that good stuff. And in order to do that, we have to make sure that all the information is kept secure. And according to also our attorney Stephanie, who had worked on it as well, it was an incomplete policy before, and it was really referring to only students that had reached, I think it was students that had reached like the age of 21 or something like that, and the 18? Thank you, 18. And it really needed to be over, all-encompassing. Thank you very much, Ms. Goldstein. And finally, the, the third is the K-5 appeals process. And so, let me just take a quick look at that one. Oh, sorry, I have that one up on my screen. Here we go. Alrighty. The K-5 appeals process, really just, you know, the changes that were made to this one, were, were all around actually putting parameters into place so that it wasn't just guesswork, like, hey, if we're appealing something, you have to talk to someone at some point in time. It has changed to, now, you know, you reach out to, you know, for a Level 1, Level 2, Level 3, you have different parameters that you go to, and that in the Level 3, for instance, change, it is that the superintendent has five school days to respond in writing to an appeal, and then, you know, it will start to, start to gain traction and trajectory from there. So again, we just put some parameters around exactly, you know, what a Level 1, Level 2, Level 3 is, and when it is brought to the committee. All three of these were amended and passed two to, two to zero at the policy meeting, and I would move passage tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Feather moves passage for G-21, J-21, and K-5 amended policies. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Goldstein. Any discussion?
I just have a question about K-5. I'm looking, so Level 2 allows, Level 2 appealed to the superintendent within 10 days, and then it says a reasonable time after hearing. The superintendent has a opportunity to make his decision within a reasonable time, but there's no definition of the reasonable time, and I understand, you know, it's kind of a layman's estimate. But then on Level 3, it says the person filing the appeal to the school committee has up to 10 days, which is their prerogative, you know? And then it gives the superintendent another five days to respond to them filing the appeal to the school committee? And then it's, and then it gives another five days to show good cause shown, and there's no definition for good cause shown. And then it gives the superintendent another three days to respond to the, to the appeal of the parent, to respond to whatever their accusations were. So now, I mean, we're, we're, you know, and again, one of my criticisms of the, of the appeal process is that when I went through it, you know, my son cumulatively got his suspension overturned, and he got it overturned 10 days after he had already served the entire suspension. And this is actually making it longer, you know? So if you add up all the days, and we can't add the days up because, you know, a reasonable amount of time doesn't have a definition. You know, but there's, just seems to be a lot of, and then, you know, one of the other things that I, I don't have an issue with, but I just, I question why, why the person appealing to the school committee has to, again, include the superintendent in their email to appeal to the school committee? And if they don't include the superintendent in their email to appeal to the school committee, then they won't be heard. You know, it's, just seems to be, seems to be a little too, I don't know what the word I'm looking for, but a little too confining? You know, you're almost asking, I mean, obviously, if somebody has an appeal, they have to open this, they're going to open this document, and they're going to read the document, I would, I would imagine, eventually, when they find out it exists. But if we're trying to appeal a detention or a suspension, I think we can get more streamlined and less, less... and less, less time-consuming, you know, more, less days instead of more days would be more beneficial. I think we did the opposite here.
On the reasonable time for the superintendent, Level Two, I think that's fair. I think that, that the policy could be changed to say he's got five days or whatever, some reasonable time. With this particular superintendent, it's usually two hours, you know what I mean? Because he's very quick. So that's reasonable and the committee, you could propose an amendment to it to put a number of days if you wanted to. That's certainly fine on the floor here. With respect to the process thereafter, you know, one of the things that the committees, the guidance that we kind of got when we were asked to do some work on K5 was that the committee wanted to hear things on the papers as an initial matter. Doesn't mean, the policy also says that if the committee wants to actually hear humans, it can do that. So what, I mean, in any due process process, the litigants get a certain amount of time to hear the, and this does not apply to suspensions, by the way. That, that's an entirely separate policy for, for that process. This would apply to any sort of an appeal of something that is not-
I think, I think this also applies to suspensions, right?
No, it doesn't. Suspensions has its own appeal process. Detentions might be different, but suspensions, yes, and it could apply to like a decision by the school department, I don't know if we're still doing it this way, I can't remember where this goes directly to ride, but if a parent wants their child to go to a different elementary school or a different middle school, this would apply to that, for example. Just by way of example. So the, the decision is made at the superintendent's level and then the parent is given 10 days. They don't have to take 10 days.
I understand that.
They can take one day, but it gives them at least some period of time to make a decision about whether they want to appeal and then the superintendent gets five days. That should typically be the end of it. Then it comes to the school committee and so you could shorten all those days too if you wanted to. That's up to the committee. But that gives a kind of a rational period of time. And then because we had an incident with one of these appeals where something got filed on the day that the committee was going to hear it, I think there was some, well, now the superintendent can't even respond to that. And keep in mind, this is all levels of appeal. So the superintendent, if you want to call it the superintendent, needs to be able to respond to what the appeal is because it may be different than, you don't know what they're saying.
Yeah.
You'd have an opportunity to respond with being said so that you get a full picture of everything. And so that's why it's a shorter period for the superintendent, only five days. You could shorten it even further. It just seems, who knows what's going on in the superintendent's world? That's why that's irrational. Is this making, are you-
Yeah, no, definitely, yeah. And, you know, being that it's not for suspensions, that, you know, it, maybe if it is detention, that's a different thing, but, yeah, that makes more sense. I just do, still do have an issue with, you know, because at Level One, the response is reasonable time and then at Level Two, the response is reasonable time. Now, I mean, you know, just, I guess my, my biggest gripe is, is not having a definition for, for reasonable time, you know, and that's-
Are you asking to amend the policy, Mr. Dean? For reason, for definition of reasonable time?
Yeah, I'd like to, and-
Take a number of days.
Yeah, you know, if the community wants to discuss what a reasonable number, maybe five business days, five school days or something like that.
So discussion unreasonable time, five business days?
No, just say upon receipt of, you could, the committee, it's your pleasure. I certainly don't. I think it's perfectly rational to put in a number of days so that it's very clear. Upon receipt of the appeal, the building administrator will provide a written response within five school days after hearing the appeal. That's fine. Same thing with the Level Two. You could make that motion-
School or business, if it happens in the summer. I'll make a, yeah.
It's been seconded with discussion. So do I, can I withdraw my, after it's been seconded? No?
Mr. Dean wants to amend it, wants to move to amend, that would be the better process.
I'll make a motion to amend the policy concerning the reasonable time status of the two, the first two appeals. Defined as five school days during the school year or business days during the summer, I would say.
Someone would need to second Mr. Dean's.
Oh, yeah, that's why I was asking if I could withdraw my, my motion because my motion was for all three of the policies.
Ah, I did not gather that. Withdraw the motion.
Thank you. Withdrawing my motion, please, and no, it's, so we'll do that one third. Let's do the first two and then do that one. So the first two are, I would like to make motion to pass G21 and J21. G21, again, the at-will employee policy and J21 cumulonimbus FERPA policy.
I have a motion by Ms. Feather to pass G21 and J, policy J21. Second by Ms. Goldstein. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes six to zero.
Okay, so now I would like to, would you like to propose the amendment?
Yes, I'd like to propose an amendment on K5 to amend the policy as written to read five business days during the school year or fi, I'm sorry, five school days during the school year or five business days during the summer break for a reason, as a reasonable time to respond or instead of-
For Level One and-
For Level One and Level Two.
For Level One and Level Two of the appeals process.
I have an amendment, a-
Before, I'm sorry, Mr. Dean, I'm trying to help.
Yeah.
Return to the second page.
Yep.
Maybe five business days or five school, school days for the school committee to issue its decision after it's heard it.
Perfect.
Because it also uses that reasonable-
Yeah, yeah.
So what I'm hearing is wherever it says reasonable time-
Yeah.
We're gonna-
Five school.
We're gonna scratch that and put five school days or five business days depending on time of the year.
Yep. And that's an amendment, that's a second. We're voting on the amendment. So all in favor?
Aye.
Oops. Any opposed? Passes six to zero.
Now I'd like to move passage of the amended policy, so the K5 amended policy, as amended. Thank you.
Ms. Feather makes a motion to pass the amended K5 policy. Second by Ms. Goldstein. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes six to zero. Discussion and a vote to approve resolutions, SCPR-08-2025-111 through 113. I make a motion to approve the resolutions, SCPR-08-2025-111 through 113. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Bacon. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes six to zero. There are no payment of the bills. Dr. Thornton, do we have to go into executive session? Thank you. Motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Bacon, second by Ms. Shea. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? That passes six to zero. We adjourn at 7:59 PM. Thank you and have a great night and welcome back to school.